Item number 11, COVID update. Dr. Kelly and Susan Wieland, the executive director of Public Health. Dr. Kelly?
All right, I am actually Leon Kelly. I am currently acting as the deputy medical director for the El Paso County Public Health Department normally, and I continue to be the elected coroner of El Paso County. So today, we are here to talk about where we are with our COVID-19 response. Today is really a good day. We're here almost entirely to talk about the progress that we've made and the next phase that we're headed towards. But I want to begin by first thanking the five of you, as I have in a previous updates. Your leadership from public health perspective and from the community perspective throughout this process has been tremendous. There is no doubt for everyone up here, everyone at Public Health, everyone in the audience, everyone in our community, the last two months have been probably the most challenging, oftentimes frustrating, uncertain times of most of our professional careers. But what we are here today to talk about is largely what we have accomplished and then to look forward about what our rebuilding process looks like. But Commissioner VanderWorf has been supportive throughout. Your leadership with our businesses and the recovery, a task force, has been an incredible asset to us. Commissioner Brimmer, her personal connection to COVID, as well as her, you know, drive-by pep talks and support that she's provided to us, has been tremendous. Commissioner Gonzalez, your work with the Board of Health and your willingness to always give us an alternative viewpoint has been also an asset. Commissioner Williams, one of the things that we have appreciated is always supporting and allowing us to have the focus on our mental health and our mental wellbeing in our community and always taking a, having an eye towards our schools and our young people, which is where we're going to work moving forwards. And then obviously Commissioner Waller, for not only being a confidant during this period, you know, a mentor and a friend to help keep us all moving in the same direction. Ultimately, these decisions that we've made are our decisions, Public Health's decisions. Really, that's what we are here to do. But we have made none of those decisions without your counsel, your support, and I want to thank you all for that. We have accomplished much, but as we all know, we are in a very difficult position as we start looking for what we're going to do about our recovery and our economy and getting our community back to where we want to be. And your guys' role in that is going to grow even more as we move forward. And so, thank you. Thank you all. You know, one of the things, one of our main goals here today is to communicate to you all, as well as our community, that El Paso County is in a position where we are ready to move forward. Polls just this week show that 80% of Americans have supported the stay-at-home approach to this in our social distancing. I don't remember in my lifetime, the last time 80% of Americans agreed on anything. Seven, almost 70% of those that support it are Republicans. And so, we have done the hard work already, but now we're ready to begin the next phase. The reality is, is that we are here to convince those 80% that we are ready, that we are prepared to get moving forward. I had, I spent a couple of hours this weekend trying to relax, and oddly, one of the things I do is I like to wash my cars. I wash the cars in the driveway. So I took my 10-year-old to teach how to wash a car, and what should have taken, you know, 45 minutes took three hours, because every neighbor that walked by stopped to ask me about our COVID response and where we were and what was happening. Unfortunately, I have now become the COVID guy, which is, I don't know how you go down from being coroner, but I have. And so, every one of them stopped. My daughter eventually went in the house and said, "Mom, this is no fun. Every neighbor keeps talking to Dad about the coronavirus." And every one of them said is, "We're excited to get where we're going, but we're scared. We're scared that we're not ready. We're scared that we don't have the testing. We're scared that people aren't going to do the right thing." All right? And so, we're here to convince people that yes, El Paso County is ready to go more so than every other county, but also that people have done the right thing. And I am pleasantly surprised to see our group here doing the right thing, because this is the kind of thing that we need to show our community and give that 80% confidence. Because, you know, we can open the businesses tomorrow. Open them all. It does not matter if people are too scared to go to those restaurants, if they're too scared to go to those shops. So our job is to prove that we are ready. El Paso County is ready to go. Part of that, a big part of that is due to your leadership, and an even bigger part of that is due to our community's willing to do the hard thing now, so we can get through this and get going forward. And so, that's what we're going to talk about today. All right, so let's remember where we were a couple of months ago. We were not in a good place. I describe this as a 12-round title bout boxing, and we took some huge blows right out of the gate. We all know our bridge tournament, we all know our choir, we all know about the loss of our sheriff's deputy. And so, we took some, we took some big shots. And our goal at that point was, hey, we have a plan, let's stick with plan, let's be disciplined, and this is what's going to happen. We're going to flatten this curve, and we're going to get through this as fast as possible. And that's what we've done. And I'm going to show data today that proves it, that shows that El Paso County has done better than essentially every other county from where we started to where we are right now. How did we do it? Okay, we did it in two main ways. The first was, remember containment. That's where we use our EPIs and our testing to identify who's sick. We get to them, that's our SEAL Team Six strategy. We're in, we're out, nobody even knows where there we stop the spread of the virus. That works, and that's where we want to move forward. But when you have widespread community growth, you have to then backpedal to the next strategy, which is our mitigation, which is our social distancing and all of those things. The reality is, is that measure, the social distancing, the stay-at-home order, is a blunt instrument. It is economic napalm. It's the most aggressive approach we have to deal with this. It is, it has numerous negative side effects, which we all know and we all accept. So the goal from the beginning was to get through that phase as quickly as possible, to do as efficiently and as effectively as possible, so that we can revert back to our more strategic approach, which is our containment. And that's where we are transitioning now. That's what this week and the future weeks are going to be about. The virus is still with us, it will continue to be with us, and so, we have to be able to live with it and manage it in a way that doesn't have all the other negative fallouts that we have experienced in our community and our economy, not only in El Paso County and Colorado, but in our country and across the world. And so, how are we going to do that? How are we going to transition from this mode of intervention to a more strategic, less harmful focus? We're going to do that in four ways. Okay, and the first briefing I gave here, two months ago, it seems like 10 years ago, Commissioner VanderWorf said something to me. And he said, at the end, "Look, I know right now is difficult, and you guys are just dealing with the crisis as they come, but as things settle down, take a second to look forward and figure out what we need to do later to get out of this." Do you remember saying that?
I do, yeah.
Yeah, and at the time, to be honest, I thought, dude, we're so deep in the foxhole. Like, we don't, I don't, we don't have the time or the energy. Like, the shells are dropping all around us. But that stuck with me, and certainly, I think, stuck with us and was part of our plan. And very early on, we realized that this was going to be a struggle for resources. As our testing became clear that we didn't have it, our PPE became strained, our hospitals became taxed because of the PPE, we had to switch to some of these other modalities. And when we did that, it became clear, I think, to Susan and Dr. Johnson and myself and the rest of our Public Health leadership, that we were not going to be able to depend on either the federal government or the Colorado state government to supply us those, to completely supply us with those things. We were going to have to build resources locally and in agreement locally, and build some of these stuff up here, so that we're not dependent on somebody else. And, you know, we didn't have to go full Hunger Games on this, but the reality is, is we did, to a certain extent, have to focus on how we were going to prop up things here. And Dr. Johnson's going to talk about that and the things that we did. So that's going to be one of them, is local building capacity, so that El Paso County is ready to go regardless of what everybody else is doing in the state or across the country. And so, there are four things we had to get done to get through today. The first is a sustained decrease in our new COVID cases. We had to prove that we could control this thing. And as I presented a couple of weeks ago, we are in the place where we have done that and have continued to do that from that point. And I'm going to talk about that data today. The second is increased testing capacity. You can't use that focused strike tactic of containment if you don't have enough tests to get people tested, to know who's positive and to get to them. And so, that's the first piece of this puzzle, of putting it together, of being able to take these more strategic approaches that are less harmful to our community. Dr. Johnson's going to talk about that. She has worked, her and Lisa Powell have worked incredibly hard to shore up that testing capacity. And right now, we are in an incredible place with that. For the last almost two weeks, we've been able to test anybody who's symptomatic, which is really where you need to be. That is not the case across the vast majority of Colorado. Colorado averages, the state, about 30 tests per day per 100,000. That's what they can do. The recommendation is 152 tests per day per 100,000. Right now, we meet that. Okay, we meet the gold standard of where we want to be, and that capacity is going to continue to grow. The third is contact tracing. Once you have those positives, you have to have staffing that can get out there, get to those people, get them isolated, get them quarantined, so we can focus just on the sick people instead of on everybody else. And so, Susan, Director Wieland has worked incredibly hard and continue to work hard, and that's an area where we're going to need your assistance to help build up even more that traffic. So we're ready to handle this over the next, you know, one to one and a half years. And then our hospital capacity. As we come out of this, we are going to have more cases. That's just the reality. And that is okay. All right? At some point, we have to let this virus travel through our community, so that we get enough healthy young people with it, that we can build up that herd immunity. We cannot huddle in our shelters for the next year and a half until a vaccine comes. That is not acceptable.
All right, nope. Here's what we're not going to do. Appreciate your enthusiasm, I do, but this, we're not at a sporting event here, we're at a county commission hearing, so I'm going to ask, please, no comments from the audience as speakers are speaking.
So that's not an option for us. It's not an option for anybody. And so, we have to make sure that we are able to handle those increased cases that are going to come inevitably. Our goal is to protect the most vulnerable while allowing the rest of us to continue and to progress in a controlled, appropriate manner, so that we don't let this tiger back out of the cage, but we have got to move forward. And that's what, that's what we're here to talk about today. So here's our numbers, and this is cumulative, so obviously, every case we get is going to go up. There's been, I saw an article this week, it was like, "Cumulative cases in Colorado continue to climb." Well, yeah, like, every new case we have is going to go up. That's not the problem. The problem is how quickly does it go up? And here's our kind of daily case counts over since we had our first case back in early March. And you can see, we peaked essentially kind of, you know, late March, early April, and it's been a relatively steady decline since then. We're going to have days that they're going to have a lot of cases pop up. Usually, those are associated with the weekends, because some of our testing sites are closed on the weekend. So people tend to come on Mondays and Tuesdays to get tested, and then the day when that comes back, the report date, those days tend to jump up. It's not necessarily a measure of exactly what's happening. I'll show a graph in a little bit that levels that out, so we can see a little bit better. But we can see where we are, we're right at about 70 deaths. Our hospitalizations have slowly declined, we'll talk about that a little bit. As of yesterday, and I didn't check it today, but I think we had 24, 25 people in the hospital currently in El Paso County, which is a really good place to be. And so, we are very happy with this. Here's our doubling times, and this is where we talked in the beginning, which is what we were trying to control. Uncontrolled spread of the virus, one person has it, they give it to three or four or five, those three or four or five give it to three, four, or five more. That is unsustainable, even over short periods of time, because you're going to get so many people sick so quickly, that just mathematically, you're going to have too many people at the hospital. And that's what you see what we had very early on. Our doubling times were essentially straight up. These numbers show you doubling times of days. So 15 days means it takes 15 days for, you know, five cases to become 10. We could see very early on, and our doubling time was super short, probably less than a day, which is disastrous. As some of our strategies came in, we started educating folks, we got people apart, we got people washing their hands and doing those kinds of things, that flattened out. It continues to flatten out over time, to the point now where it's almost completely flat. This is the flat curve that, as we all talked about for so long, we're looking for, and we certainly achieved it. This is, this is that, instead of seeing the day-to-day cases, hospitalizations, we're taking weeks. So we're combining all the days of the weekend to one data point, which evens it out a little bit, it makes it easier to see what's happening. Our blue is our, this is our onset date. So somebody gets positive, we interview them, and we say, "Okay, what day did you feel sick?" Because the day they got reported has to do with a lot of different factors. "What day did you start feeling crummy?" And they say, "What was this day?" Okay, so this is the date, you know, March 16th. We know March 16th is the day they really got sick. And so, these are the onset dates, it gives us a better idea of where we are. We can see it dramatically jump up that first, that first couple of weeks of March, and then it starts to level off. This is when our social distancing went in place. And you can see almost immediately, as I've talked about before, when you look at onset date, almost immediately when you put these measures in place, you see dramatic alterations in your trajectory. So we saw our social distancing, yes, it worked, immediately flattened it out. As it starts to start to decline, then we went to our stay-at-home orders. Stay-at-home order was a more extreme version of our social distancing. And then you see it start to plummet as we continue through here. This is what gets, stops our overwhelming trajectory, gets us leveled out, gets those cases declining, so in the back end, we are able to deal with those cases as they pop up. It's not to prevent, it's not to stop the virus. It's not. It's to allow it to spread to be manageable by us. Okay? So as we continue, we are going to have cases. Our admission dates, this is when folks come at the hospital. One of the things that people like to do, they have to focus on the number of cases. And that's okay, but there's a lot of problems with that. One is access to testing. You know the best way to prevent any cases from popping up? Don't test anybody. If you don't test anybody, guess what? You got no cases. You're doing great. No, you're not. You're horrible. Right? And so, we are now at a place, finally, over the last couple of weeks, where we can test everybody that needs it. So our numbers are legit. But really, what we're trying to do, remember, is to, is to protect our ability to treat those people who do get it. That's really what we're trying to do here. And so, what we really want to look at is our hospital capacity and who's showing up there. And when you look at this orange one, this is our admission date, once again, you know, you get sick, it takes a few days for symptoms to show up, it takes another few days for you to go get tested, and if you do end up in the hospital, that's going to take a little bit more time. So there's always going to be a lag between cases and hospitalizations. You can see, we peaked once again with our hospitalizations at late March, and then we began to decline after the stay-at-home order. This is the number that's going to drive how quickly we can move through this, and how aggressive we can be, how conservative we need to be as we pull back. Our hospital's ability to deal with this is what we're going to use to be our prominent determinant of how we progress through this. And as of today, and as we have over the last several weeks, we are in excellent shape. Our hospitals are very happy with where they are and appreciative of the efforts that we made, but they are also ready to get going as they open elective surgeries and some other things this week. So let's take a look at some of the other counties. And once again, I want to remember and remind you all that when we started, right out of the gate, we had top 10 highest case mortalities in the entire country. We were in a very, very bad place, and we were getting called out by national media, local media, everybody else. And I said right then, "Look, we're going to be fine, we have a plan, let's work the plan, and these numbers will come down," and certainly, they have. And so, here's where we are. This is number of cases across the bottom, this is population across the top. Ideally, if your positive cases are equalled by your population, this should be a straight line. All these dots should be lined up. Okay? If every county was doing the exact same level of quality of control, they should be a straight line. The more people you have, the more cases you have. If you're above this line, that means you have a high population, but you're on this end, you have very low case numbers. Means you're doing good. You want to be up here in this corner. You want to have a lot of people, but you want to have very few cases, assuming you're testing them, right, which are. And that's where El Paso County is. Anybody below this line is doing poorly, meaning they have more cases per their population than they should, given their size. And you can see, the two places that are below that are Weld County and Eagle County. Eagle County got blasted right out of the gate because of people coming from out of town to ski, then they infected all of their own local workers. That's what crushed Eagle County. And see another graph that shows Eagle County's trajectory, and it was terrible early on. Weld County is in a different, is in a bad place for very different reasons. And that's because early on, they chose not to do some of the things that the rest of Colorado has done. And we'll see where they are now as well. The size of the dot is actually the number of fatalities, raw fatalities. And you can see, even though we're as big as Denver, we have way more cases and way less fatalities. Even though we're bigger than Arapahoe, same thing. So we are doing really, really well with where we are, particularly when you consider where we started. Here's us compared to some other places. Now, this is, this is raw numbers, so it doesn't account for your population. And El Paso County is green. You can see Denver continues to be on an upward trajectory, Arapahoe continues to be on an upward trajectory, Weld County continues to be on upward trajectory. They have not yet got control. This is why locally, they've decided not to transition to the next phase yet, because based on the data, they're not ready to. Look at El Paso County. It flattened out weeks ago, we continue to stay flat, we are in really, really good shape. But this is where we really shine, and this is where you correct for population. This is Eagle County, once again, they got slammed right out of the gate. Everybody else, Weld County continues to accelerate their case numbers on a linear curve. Most of these are starting to flatten out a little bit, but look at us at the very bottom. Despite being the one with the highest population, despite having significant population density in our city, we have made efforts from the very beginning that have fixed, that have dramatically changed the trajectory. El Paso County is situated in a position of strength at this point, because of our leadership and because of the efforts of the people in our community. Right? Because we didn't start out that way. And so, this illustrates, this graph right here illustrates what community commitment looks like. And as we said early on, the reason we do this is so that we can get through it and we can get on to the next phase. El Paso County is ready to go. Some of these other places are not, to be honest with you. And so, one of the other things we're trying to do is, as we progress through here, is learn from what's happened. One of the ways that we're doing that is by actually interviewing the people who have recovered, who obviously is an overwhelming majority of our citizens. And they, and our questions are, you know, "How are you doing? How are you feeling? What was your, what was your experience like? Can we learn anything about the virus from that?" But also, it gives us an idea of the support that we have in our community, and where the gaps are and what we need to do better. And so, one of the things we do is, as we ask them, "Did you have access to resources during your time of isolation?" We're asking people, if they're sick, symptomatic, to go home. We've got to make sure that we're able to take care of those people. A lot of that's going to end up on their families and friends. 90% of people said yes, thanks to families, friends, neighbors, their churches, all of these groups, able to support. As we talked about from the beginning, this is where our community can step in and help support these folks. 3% said somewhat, one of the things that was often mentioned was, "Look, I'm sick, it's tough for me to get groceries." 7% said no, and this usually dealt directly with either economic challenges or what they felt was access to good local care. And unfortunately, these things have been with us, and it's times like this that exacerbate them and make it more clear. Those discrepancies between groups and between people just become magnified during these times. But this is a big one, and this isn't news to anybody in this room, but "Did you or someone in your household experience the loss of job or wages?" 35% said yes. Okay? That's going to be the next phase of where we're going and what the rest of the, a lot of the rest of the talk's going to be about is Public Health's role in helping us get these things going, obviously, in a safe, appropriate way. But this is a huge part of the next front of this COVID war. The virus is only part of it, and we all know that many of these other things are going to be felt for weeks, months, and probably years to come. And so, Public Health needs to be focused on those things, too. One of the issues, and anybody, everyone, although the five of you know, and many of the people in the crowd know, mine and Susan Wieland's focus and priority of mental health in our community. And that's been an ongoing struggle for us, and the situation that we find ourselves in because of this virus is only going to make that even more challenging. And so, what we've been doing is monitoring how we're doing. This is a syndromeic data, so these are the people who show up to the hospital of various things, alcohol overdose, opioid overdose, or heroin. As of yet, it's been relatively flat, and we haven't seen a lot of change. That doesn't mean that that's going to be the way that it's going to stay. This is our suicidal ideation and suicide attempts. There's been a lot of talk this week about the mental health ramifications of what we've all been through. And as of yet, there does not seem to be much of an alteration, as from the beginning of the outbreak. I can tell you right now, that's not going to stay, that's the case. That is going to be an area of concern and focus. At my office, you know, there's been statements in the media that we've had this many more suicides. We haven't. We are actually down two suicides over the last 45 days than we were the same time last year. So we have not yet seen the effect. Make no comfort in that statement, because last year, we went from 153 suicides the year before to 180. So the fact that we're on pace with last year is not a reason to celebrate. But we have not yet seen those effects. But when we look at completed suicides, the biggest risk factors are, you know, marital discord, financial struggles, health problems, and grieving a lost loved one. Right? We got, you know, marriages are strained, I'm sure, normally, but we've got three of those four going on right now. We've got a lot of loss and grief in our community, we certainly have financial struggles, and we've got people with healthcare challenges, and people are fearful. And so, there's no doubt that that's going to be an area where we're going to need to focus. So we are going to need your guys' support as Public Health moves forward. One of the things that we're doing at Public Health to focus on this is the GRIT initiative, and this is a place where our community can step in. The people who are here to say, "Let's get Colorado open, let's get this, let's get this going," this is where we need your help to make that happen. One is obviously doing what we're asking you to do to slow the spread, but second is to help the people in our community recover from this, build resiliency in them, so they can take on the challenges that are coming. One of the things that GRIT's doing is we're training, we're hopefully hoping to train about 1,000 GRIT trainers. It's similar to Mental Health First Day, but more of a focus on some upstream things through UCCS to help people in the community who are struggling, who need that kind of stuff. So you can go to grit.uccs.edu, check it out, see if it's something you want to sign up for and be part of the solution, instead of certainly part of the problem. And that is all I have from my perspective. Dr. Johnson is going to come, talk about testing, health equity, and our, working with our hospitals. So thank you. And I'll be here for four questions after, and then for public comments. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly, Dr. Johnson. If you could, please state your name, and then you may begin.
Sir, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm Dr. Robin Johnson, Medical Director of El Paso County Public Health. And I would like to just tack on to what Dr. Kelly was saying about the mental health. This is something, and substance use disorder, it's something that Public Health has been aware of over the last few years, participating in our child fatality review team, putting together youth suicide prevention coalition, working with our communities on crisis response teams, with our community response team in the city, and then Beacon with our sheriff's office into the county. And we've been working on a community navigation team and really looking at what are some of those upstream things that we could do and need to do to address some of the issues that were arising in our community even before COVID, and then recognizing now, with the stresses of this pandemic, that we will need to continue and in partnership with our community and community partners in addressing this, but also making the resources available and communicating to our community and the residents that there are resources for them, and really looking at that preventive piece of it. So as we look at the things that Public Health do, and kind of where our sweet spot is in healthcare, we've been tracking COVID by ZIP code. It's important for us, because it tells us a lot about where we need to concentrate our efforts in prevention, but there's more to this. As Public Health, we have interest in our ZIP codes, even outside of geographic spread of disease. There's a growing volume of evidence that shows that one's health is influenced not only by genetics and other biological characteristics, but also by a variety of social factors. Social factors that include access to stable housing, employment opportunities, healthy foods, healthcare services, quality education, safe spaces, and a number of other elements. These social determinants of health typically strongly correlate with the health status with the health status of a given community. So much so that we now associate your zip code as a potentially accurate predictor of your health. Armed with this information, El Paso County Public Health has been working with communities that struggle with equity. And with our increase in support due to your support of us for critical positions in the last year, we hired Maggie Yohanna as our health equity planner. And she continues to support many different aspects of COVID and looking into these equity issues. We've been working as El Paso County Public Health since 2016 with the Rise Coalition to enhance, to enhance southeast Colorado Springs from within through citizen-led change. And our focus has been on tracking health as they address the social factors that lend to health. Maybe I'm hitting the wrong. Left-click the mouse. Whoop. Right-click. There we go. All right. So when we look to health equity due to social determinants, we know that these events existed before, and they're going to exist even after COVID-19. The pandemic simply amplifies these inequities in a vulnerable population. And this is due to the population already dealing with stressors, economic challenges, and access issues that are intensified during such times as this. These times highlight our need to stay engaged, looking at this with systematic qualitative data to assist us. And trends in other counties are providing a snapshot of increased risks for certain neighborhoods or communities. Public health is looking at our own county trends following calls, cases, case recovery, businesses, et cetera, to understand more fully where our continued focus and advocacy for health equity can have the greatest impact. These type of collaboratives in COVID-19 response have enabled us to meet criteria for moving into this safer-at-home phase from our stay-at-home phase orders. Continued support from leadership, partnering agency, and from the community itself is essential for the continued success of what we have already seen here in El Paso County. An important component of the success, as Dr. Kelly was speaking to, for our safer-at-home phase is going to be the ability to perform widespread testing. Public health and partners throughout El Paso County have put forth a tremendous amount of work to increase the availability for local testing. There's a gold standard out of Harvard that demonstrates the goal to be 152 tests per day per 100,000 people. So we calculate that for the population of El Paso County. That comes out to be about 1140 tests per day. And at the present capacity, we are approaching this or exceeding it with our partners at around 1,100 tests per day. This means we have, one, increase the liability to run those tests. They have the machines and the reagent. Two, we have the swabs and transfer media to actually collect those tests. And finally, we have staff and the personal protective equipment that that staff needs to gather the swabs. And part of this is actually, we also are tracking with our partners how quickly they can turn these tests around. Early on, the labs were easily overwhelmed, and our turnaround times could extend out to seven to 10 days. That is not helpful when we're trying to do case investigation and have a rapid response before their spread.